Continue praying for those folks who are being bombed over there in that area, Lord. So we ask you to keep on lifting them up, God. Have your way in this place here, God, as we continue looking up on the hill where comes our help, and we give it all to you, Father God. Thank you.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhopper.
I am here.
Mayor Connolly, have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor Connolly, I have no changes this evening.
All right. Got a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All right, motion was made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes, Mayor. Six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. Total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
First speaker is Mr. Stephen Hardy-Roz. Mr. Hardy-Roz, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmembers.
At 1:30 this morning, one of our fine officers were called over to McGregor Downs Road in West Greenville to find the dead body of a young teen who was apparently the victim of a hit-and-run while perhaps riding a scooter or something. We don't know exactly what time or more information about this person, but I think it goes to the issue of our streets being safe. Earlier today, we heard in the workshop about city council goals, number one being safe community, number four enhancing accessible transportation, whether it's scooters, walking, biking, et cetera. If these are truly the council goals, then I think we should always prioritize these things. So last week, I was dismayed when there was a public meeting that was called on Friday for very next Tuesday about a project that the last time we had a public meeting was eight years ago about Dickinson Avenue improvements. There we heard presentation information from Kimberly-Horn, NC DOT, and the city of Greenville about this project, and it was billed as supporting bicycle accessibility with bike lanes the entire route with sidewalk improvements and pedestrian safety. But when we got to the meeting, the bicycle lanes were poof, they had vanished. But the video shown, and still on YouTube, shows a cyclist riding the wrong way against traffic, not to sidewalks, which is illegal in Greenville, something that isn't safe. So I'm not sure how the city and DOT and Kimberly-Horn could endorse such a video, but there it remains. So with this project happening on Dickinson Avenue, yet we hear about the build grant, and especially I bring your attention to Section F, the millennial connector, we coordinated those connectors years ago so that you'd leave the connector coming out between the buildings, and if you were riding, would go into the bike lane along Dickinson Avenue. When the bike lane's gone, you'll now be exiting that millennial connector, not only crossing 10th Street at the bottom of the hill, but you'll be crossing at the other end between parked cars. When brought to the attention of the designer and then the DOT, they admitted it was dangerous, yet no plans of changing it. So I'm wondering why we keep spending money and matching money, because it seems that nobody really, really would acknowledge who actually made those changes between the three, but it seemed to be that on-street parking was more of a priority than safety. So when I counted that there are 16 on-street parking spaces, but 42 in the 9th and Dickinson that go on mostly unused, and 44 in the Clark Street unused, parking doesn't seem to be really the issue here. So is safety truly your number-one priority? If so, then when DOT presents later tonight in number 18, please ask them who, why, and when the bike lanes were erased from this and why safety is not a priority, and why they use 2008 standards for complete streets rather than current standards for complete the safety, because I don't want to be dealing with other deaths and innocent people being killed. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hardy-Roz. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Next speaker is Mr. Maury York. Mr. York, you have three minutes to address the mayor and city council.
My name is Maury York, and I live at 2001 East 5th Street. My wife and I have owned a building in Uptown Greenville since 1989, and it was designated a local landmark last year. I urge members of the city council to reconsider its initiative to replace the existing ordinance prohibiting bars in the downtown area from locating within 500 feet of an existing bar. The current ordinance was adopted in February 2010, following two murders that occurred at a 5th Street bar in June 2009. It was a time when there were more bars uptown. The bars often resulted in vandalism, including on several occasions, to our building. The police department had to spend huge sums of money to police the area. The city council appointed a special task force on public safety to make recommendations on reducing crime in Greenville, and the committee, of which I was a member, produced a report in July 2011. The committee expressed approval of the city council's ordinance adopting the present 500-foot rule. At the time the ordinance was adopted, the Daily Reflector expressed the opinion that the move was a gamble because there was no comprehensive plan to address crime-related issues. But I believe the ordinance has been quite effective in reducing crime in the uptown area. The ordinance that will be presented later tonight would open a virtual Pandora's Box, making it possible to have numerous bars in the uptown area. These would be allowed to accommodate 500 or more patrons and could be open until 1:00 a.m. The ordinance would depend upon the Board of Adjustment to deny renewal of special-use permits because of nuisance issues, but in my experience, the Board of Adjustment is very reluctant to put an existing bar out of business. The Board certainly never offered any support when I complained on several occasions about the nuisances associated with the bar adjacent to our building. I hope you will not move forward with this ordinance, especially without holding a public hearing, as I'm certain many citizens oppose this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. York. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Next speaker is Mr. Paul Fallon. Mr. Fallon, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. First, I want to apologize for mistakenly stating that no one responded to an email I sent about crypto mining studies. In fact, Mayor Connolly and Councilmember Smiley did so. That said, due diligence is still required regarding crypto mining facility regulations. Crypto mining creates noise problems. Before trying in Greenville as part of the county application for a permit in Belvoir, Compute North had to submit a noise impact report. They did so only two hours before the county board was to vote. Worse, two acoustic experts found that the report was substandard. The experts said that it was not possible with that report for Compute North to promise to adhere to the county north's ordinance, as it did not account for changes in season, wind, and other factors, and instead described an environment of a typical 53-degree summer night. Think of that, a typical 53-degree summer night in Pitt County. Simply not realistic, yet it was the base for Compute North's study, a laughable claim, not unlike many others put forth. All city council members were given this information before the initial vote, and acoustic expert Mark Sprague was present at the meeting. Not one person asked Dr. Sprague a question. This is just one small example of the unreliability of Compute North and the lack of the due diligence taken. A whistleblower lawsuit filed against Compute North has now made this a lot messier and a lot riskier. The allegations include securities laws violations, repeated misrepresentations of holdings, the inability to provide contracted services, non-payment of compensation, and making business decisions based on the racial makeup of the Belvoir area. It's done by a vice president of the company. Earlier, you received numerous letters and testimony emphasizing that this company cannot be trusted to value our community. Please take this as further evidence of that unreliability and put the welfare of our communities first. This new information underscores the need for everyone to stop, reassess, and put proper safeguards in place. The council should not spend anything further to enable this risky venture. Rather, environmental and economic studies, and at bare minimum, a noise impact report are needed before any building is completed, with all information distributed throughout the communities possibly impacted. When asked what will happen if Compute North starts up and we don't like what they're doing, Tony Cannon answered, "We would be stuck with them for five years." With the risk this new lawsuit lays bare, we could be stuck with a lot more than that. We could be facing endless litigation, as has been the case in Tennessee, and another company, or Compute North could go bankrupt, sticking us with a massive cleanup and hundreds of thousands of dollars wasted, all on the Pitt County Citizens tab. Please pause the cutting of trees, the efforts to get more land, and any spending of money for this risky business. Put in safeguards, please. Insist on environmental and economic reports for this substantial change. We need transparency, and we're not going away. Over 600 people signed this petition for Compute North and to keep it out, and the organization in town is growing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fallon. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional signed-up speakers.
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Ed Carter. I'm a former mayor of Greenville. Spent six years in that capacity as a city councilman and then mayor of Greenville. I come before you today to represent a noble cause. It's the crypto industry that you voted to allow to do their due diligence and start here in Greenville. It's created a grave concern among citizens of this community, black and white. I've been here for 45 years, and I've never known a group from so many different places. And some of us, some of these people are not residents of the area who are gravely concerned about the danger and the adverse effect that this industry is going to have on our quality of life. And let me just briefly read this letter. I think it's the best way to get the message to you. My name is Ed Carter, former mayor of the city of Greenville and the current chair of the newly incorporated North of the River Association, NOTRA. NOTRA is a group of concerned Greenville residents who live north of the Tar River and our Pitt County allies. Our mission is to fight continued environmental injustice in our neighborhoods, to prevent any harmful facility, particularly Compute North, from operating in this area, and to be a unified voice for the communities north of the Tar River. I'm here to speak against the zoning changes that the body, this body, has passed on January 24th, allowing crypto mining in an industrial zone, partial 35 acres and greater in size. As a stark, as a stark underscoring of our concerns, the former Compute North employees has filed a lawsuit claiming racial discrimination, retaliation, failure to pay wages promptly, wrongful termination, breach of contract, and unjust enrichment. It alleges that the Compute North used racial demographics to determine the site location of the proposed Belvoir facility and ostensibly the proposed Greenville facility, and prepared financial statements to show that serious, that services were being provided, were being provided, and payment would be received, but in actuality, Compute North was contracting to provide more co-location, co-location storage capacity than they have available, creating inaccurate forecasts that they provided to investors, which is a violation of security laws. And this body, is this body comfortable with your vote to allow? Say again?
That's time, Mr. Carter.
If you can start to wrap it up.
Okay. Are you comfortable with your decision to allow this? There are some very serious ramifications from this industry being here. Number one, based on the size of this industry, the amount of electricity that it consumes, it can be reasonably, it has been reasonably computed that our utility, our individual utility bills can be increased by 85%, which is almost double from what we are paying now. And they're not even mentioning the contamination from the electronic waste that's generated from the massive change of requirements of the items that generates this, makes this possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker? I'm sorry. Anyone else that'd like to speak during our public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers. My name's Kevin Howard. I currently serve on the Affordable Housing Committee, which was absorbed, which I was the chairman of the Redevelopment Commission, which was absorbed by the Affordable Housing Committee. I also used to be a bar owner, and I'm coming to speak on the removal of the 500-foot ordinance. Back in 2010, 2011, when it was put in place, there were six ordinances presented to the council, three, I believe, passed. This was one of them. There were approximately 12 to 14 licenses issued to private membership bars at that time. In the area that this applies to, there currently seem to be four to five licenses now. That is due in part to the 500-foot rule, but as a whole, if you investigate more on the subject, there's something called a sub-district overlay, which is applied to this ordinance and says no new license can be issued within 500 feet of an existing license, but it must be within the sub-district overlay, which is essentially uptown or downtown Greenville. If the council moves to keep in place the 500-foot ordinance or remove it, either way, I believe the bigger issue may be the sub-district overlay. It was put in place in the 80s. It was put in place to maintain an area for entertainment district. Our entertainment district has grown down Dixon Corridor. We've invested into the Uptown Theater. I'm sorry, the name escapes me at the moment, but they have special-use permits that are different than private membership permits. There's currently one permit issued that's grandfathered in outside of town. Every other place that serves alcohol in this town has a restaurant-issued license, which is overseen by the laws of North Carolina State ABC. To have everything in one place was initially thought to be close, to be able to monitor them both with law enforcement and to also have within a distance, a walking distance of most of the student housing. As you all well know, student housing has expanded across the entire city. At one point, we had bus routes, ECU-provided bus routes that were, the bill was actually flooded by the different properties and ECU. I believe they discontinued that. In the 80s, we didn't have such things as Uber or Lyft, which the city does now. And the thought of safety in this particular subject matter is that if the buses aren't running and we don't have a place to safely monitor, then opening up the entire city for growth, the sub-district overlay is the actual problem in this particular situation. If it's removed, then the 500-foot rule could stay in place and would help to expand the different businesses. If it remains in place, then the 500-foot rule perhaps should be removed because there are a lot of open businesses or open properties that are not being utilized. As we've grown down the Dixon Corridor, the downtown, uptown area seems to be getting left behind. I believe that most, all the business owners down there want to lead by example and have made strides, and most of the ones that were in place when the ordinance was put in place are not currently the owners. I'd just like to just educate yourself on the history of the area, and please look into what the sub-district overlay means to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Vivian Kenny, and I live north of the river. And I just have one question that I would like to ask the city council people. When you voted to send crypto mining north of the river, did you consider Welcome Middle School? What I understand, Welcome Middle School name never came up during the voting of this crypto mining going. I know it's predominantly black, but those children need your help. They need your protection. Not only the children need your protection, the people that live north of the river also need your protection. When you were voted in, you were voted and made a vow to protect all citizens, no matter where they live, no matter what color they were, whether they're black, blue, brown, whether they're rich, poor, whatever they were. You made a vow to protect us, and if you're going to send Computer North to our neighborhood, then you are not protecting us. You are not protecting us, and you are not protecting the citizen that's going to take our place when we're gone, which are the children at Welcome Middle School. They need your protection. We need your protection. Please go back and reconsider your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name's Kevin Johnson, owner and operator of East Carolina Tire and Sales. I am a bit confused. Last time I was here, the map that I viewed that we had at night is totally different from the map that I see now, so I'm kind of confused. You guys said that Reed Street was included in the 500-foot rule, the high upper, but the map that shows here, we're out, we're not in. From what I'm seeing here, everything that's in the yellow perimeter, then they're okay, but it's showing here on the city website that Reed Street is not. So I didn't know if it was a certain side of Reed Street or not, but from, on page 171, it looks like they're not included. So I didn't know where you stand. Last time I was here, the map was different, but when I went back and looked at it, it was totally different than I talked with someone in planning and zoning.
He said Reed Street.
And they told me the same thing as well, that it was something different.
Madam Manager, do you want to?
Mr. Johnson. Staff is going to do a presentation about that. Okay. And I think staff will explain the changes in the map.
Okay.
And will also explain that there could be some additional changes tonight.
Okay.
From the council. And that was changed because what we heard from the council will ask me was to make the area a little smaller.
Okay.
But if you'll stay, I think that staff can speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. She already spoke. You already spoke, right?
May I speak?
Unfortunately, you can only speak one time.
I would like to say that I have a copy of the presentation, which I want to leave.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. I think you've already spoke as well. If you want to give the copies to the letters to the staff, you'll have them all come to. Mr. Callan right over here will be happy to take this. All right, seen that? We'll close the public comment period, move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Mayor, the consent agenda includes the following items. Approval of the minutes from the December 6, 2021 city council meeting, city council workshop, February 7, 2022, city council workshop, February 7, city council meeting, and the February 10, 2022 city council meeting. Item number two is an amendment to the 2022 city council meeting schedule and the FY 2223 budget schedule. Item number three is a public art recommendation for the Emerald Loop Intersection Art mural at Cotange and Reed Circle. Item number four is a public art recommendation for sculpture to be located at Dickinson Avenue and Columbia Avenue. Item number five is a resolution of intent to close a 20-foot alley north of Dickinson Avenue, west of Moi Boulevard, and adjoining the Southern Rightofway and the CLNA Railroad. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the sale of property located at 431 West 5th Street by upset bid method. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the termination of the development agreement between the City of Greenville and Seacoast Communities LLC for the Imperial Tobacco Processing Plant Site. Item number eight is authorization for Greenville Utilities Commission to initiate condemnation proceedings for the easement acquisitions for the Mount Pleasant to Indigreen Substation Project. Item number nine is a resolution and deed of release for abandonment of a 10-foot-wide electric easement across tax parcel 74017. Item number 10 is an amendment and renewal of the interlocal agreement with Pitt County for the use of the Pitt County 700 megahertz radio system. Item number 11 is the approval of the agreement with Tyler Technologies for Support Services and Updates for Intergov. Item number 12 is the approval of the agreement with Tyler Technologies for Support Services and Updates for Munis. Item number 13 is an amendment for construction engineering and inspection services on the South Tar River Greenway Phase 3B project. Item number four is the approval of task orders number one and two for professional services for construction engineering and inspection and construction material testing. Item number 15 is the demolition and sale of the existing building located at Wildwood Park. Item number 16 is a request by the police department to utilize asset forfeiture funds to purchase equipment, and item number 17 are various tax runs greater than $100.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda or any of the items?
I'd actually like to pull an item.
Okay.
I'd like to pull 13, please, the Greenway item.
Move to approve the remaining items. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Council, actually, Mayor Protem Glover. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Thank you very much. We'll move straight to item number 13. Madam Manager?
And thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is an amendment for construction engineering and inspection services on the South Tar River Greenway Phase 3B project. Staff is available for questions. We'll call forward city engineer Lisa Kirby, as well as civil engineer 3 Lynn Rayner for questions. We do have a brief presentation if you want it, but we're happy to answer any questions.
I just want a little more detail about what's going on. Looks like we have to spend more money. What's the timing? When's it going to open? Just more detail.
So Lynn, why don't you do it? We did prepare a short presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I think in my, and I was reading the agenda yesterday, I think it's only two pages talking about this, right? So.
Yes.
Just a little more info, please.
Yeah. Great questions, because there's certainly a lot going on here. So, good evening again. So just wanted to jump in here. Overall, project location shown here on the map, Nash Street on the west end and First Street Place Apartments on the east end. The green section that you see here is approximately 99% complete, which, as you see, is the majority of the project. We have some post and cable fencing and a little signing to complete in that section, which, as we talked about in the workshop, we're, you know, seeing some supply issues, supply chain issues with those, so waiting for those to come in. But the conflict that is really driving the need for the additional services is relative to a significant conflict with an existing 24-inch sanitary sewer line. It's at the location of the red and yellow shown here on the screen, the red representing the CSX Railroad, I'm sorry, the yellow, red and yellow, the yellow representing the remaining portion of the Greenway to be completed. The existing of the sanitary sewer line was offset, which was, is something that's not readily known during the survey phase of a project. Typically, you would expect a sewer line to run directly between one manhole to the next. This one being offset in its existing condition, we were not able to determine that until this section of the Greenway was under construction. So the existence of that conflict is within the CSX right-of-way, and anyone that has had any... And anyone that has had any dealings with the railroad, you will know that anytime the railroad is involved, things tend to slow down very significantly. So, as a result of this conflict, city staff needed to coordinate with quite a few agencies represented here on the screen. Most notable, again, as I just mentioned, of those entities is CSX. And at the top of the screen, you see AECOM for CSX, which is a third-party engineering consulting firm. And the reason for that is anytime there are changes to approved designs, CSX has to be very involved with any of those changes, the review part of that process. So, the team conducted thorough investigations, held numerous meetings to determine the exact location of the existing 24-inch sewer line and how extensively it conflicted with the proposed design. Once the extent of the conflict was known, the team brainstormed various alternatives to avoid redesigning the location of the proposed steel piles and associated reinforced concrete slab. Ultimately, however, redesigning this portion proved to be the most feasible option. Despite being the most feasible option, that redesign still involved additional surveys, geotechnical research, structure design drafting, and railroad review and approval by CSX. So I say all of this to say, again, this portion of the project and all of this investigation, the redesign, it's greatly extended the contract time past its original completion date. So we wanted to give council, what we're looking at today is the additional services needed for SEPI Engineering to complete project management and inspection services for the remainder of the project. But we wanted to give council an overall idea of the impact of this conflict on the total project. So the first item here that we're looking at today as part of this item is the additional services for SEPI Engineering, Inc. The second bullet here is a change order that has been provided by the contractor Fred Smith Company. We just received that at the end of last week. So staff is currently reviewing that, determining where we can enter into some negotiations to help reduce that cost and come to an agreement. The third bullet here, CSX, again, anytime they're involved, we're on their rightofway. There are costs associated with that. And they have estimated those additional costs that we also received Wednesday of last week, I think, at $146,000. We, as staff, think there is some room for negotiation with them as well. We think that should be less as well. And we're entering into some negotiations with them on that. So that total anticipated cost with the sewer conflicts is approximately $650,000. The good news, the available funding left in the project budget is about $600,000, 80% of which is in funds from NC DOT. So the projected need for all of this is only about $50,000. There is a potential to cost share that. We are going to submit a request to NC DOT for that additional $50,000, of which 80% of that, if that's granted, they would fund that. If it's denied, then we would work, engineering would work with the finance department to determine available funding sources to fund that $50,000, which would then come back to council through a budget amendment process for your approval. So, I know that's a long answer to your question, but we wanted to kind of give you an idea of how we got to where we are and why there's the need for the additional services from SEPI due to the extended services.
So I see three more. Sorry, go ahead.
For purposes, for the council purposes, do you want to explain the oddity of the location of the sewer line? Or the, why the sewer line was not picked up when the utility locates were done?
Yeah, again, when I mentioned that earlier, you know, typically sewer lines are anticipated to run directly between center of manhole from, you know, one to center of manhole to the other. And what we found, and that's the way the design was based, was on that information. And that follows standard surveying protocol. We, as well as the design engineer, did some, we made some calls to some surveyors to say, what is your typical protocol, independent of the surveyor that did this work? Say, if you were doing this work, what are the protocols that you would undertake to locate this sewer line? And what we found out is that they would do this exact same process that this surveyor did. So there was nothing, you know, out of place or in error from the initial survey. But to the point of Madam City Manager, what we found when we started digging to install the steel piles for this concrete slab is that the sewer line was not where you would typically anticipate it to be. It was offset away from the center of the manholes. And so that caused the need for the redesign, which extended all of this work past the contract time.
And the only way it was found was through GUC?
Eventually, yes, ma'am. That was part of that coordination slide with all the various entities. We did some exploratory digging with the contractor. We worked with GUC to use their geo-located crawler, if you will.
So will this come back for three more times to council? Right now, we are green lighting 250 to SEPI. And then will it come back for the Fred Smith amount, CSX amount? Is that how that would work?
We could certainly, you know, following the purchasing thresholds, the Fred Smith account, if that exceeds the original amount that council authorized under the contract, that would come back to council. If it was within that original contract amount, then that would not need to come back to council. And then the CSX amendment, not, again, I think that would depend on purchasing requirements.
So best-case scenario, what are we looking at in terms of timing and getting this wrapped up? And being able to be on that part of the Greenway?
Right.
Asking for best case?
Actually, I think that's a great idea. That's a great way to approach it as best case. Because again, we're trying to work through this agreement with CSX on the $146,000. And they're kind of like the federal government. They don't move very quickly. Once we get that agreement finalized, then we would be able to schedule flaggers for the work because they have to have staff on site physically when you perform that work. The contractor has estimated that the actual work that he needs to do would take about three to four months. So I think best-case scenario, we were probably looking at, this is March. I would say probably another couple of, honestly, six to eight weeks to work the agreement out with CSX. So six, you know, we're probably looking at early fall for completion.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley?
I was going to move to approve the item.
All right, motions have been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to, is it item number 17? Did I have the right number?
Yeah, I think we're on item number 18.
18.
18 is a presentation by the North Carolina Department of Transportation on the Dickinson Avenue Improvement Project. And I'll call forth with Sarah Lantin, who is a resident engineer with NC DOT. Sarah?
Mayor, city council, thanks for having me today to talk about the Dickinson Avenue Improvement Project. As most of you know, the project location goes from Memorial to Reed Circle. We're going to show a short video that gives a very good general overview of the project. One of you guys is going to roll it.
Eight years ago, we began to envision how we could improve the Dickinson Avenue corridor. We discussed the need for better sidewalks, crosswalks, and sidewalk stops. We discussed enhanced lighting along the corridor, and we envisioned more ways to enjoy downtown Greenville by activating the streetscape with small parks, benches, and bike racks. And now it's finally happening.
Streetscaping along the entire corridor is intended to not only be functional, but to improve the bike and pedestrian experience.
Hi, I'm Lisa Kirby, Director of Engineering with the City of Greenville. We're very excited to partner with the NC DOT to upgrade 1.3 miles of Dickinson Avenue between Memorial Drive and Reed Circle. We hope this video will help you better understand the what, why, and when of the project, as well as how it will impact you during construction.
I'm Sarah Lantin, the project manager for NC DOT on the construction phase of this project. Updating the storm drainage system in the Dickinson Avenue corridor is a priority for us. The current system is nearing 100 years old and must be improved to ensure it is reliable long-term.
To minimize impacts to businesses and residents, we envision construction being done in sections rather than closing the entire corridor from Memorial to Reed. The contractor will begin in the section from Reed to Fickland and will not be allowed to close the section from Fickland to Ninth at the same time. However, the contractor will be allowed to work in other sections south of Ninth while the northern sections are underway. Detours and protective barriers will be in place to ensure safety and access throughout construction. We will start by removing the existing roadway and expanding the storm waterline capacity to meet the needs of residents and businesses. Once the work under the road is complete, we will rebuild and resurface the road, including new storm drains, curbs and gutters, sidewalks, crosswalks, lighting, and trees. Temporary closures of the roadway and on-street parking are expected. Where feasible, pedestrian and bicycle access will be maintained on Dickinson Avenue using safety barriers. Pedestrians will be temporarily detoured to a parallel street where an onsite detour is not feasible. The duration of these closures will vary in length based on the work to be completed in each segment. But detours with clear signage will be implemented to navigate around construction. During construction, businesses will remain open and access to both businesses and residential properties will be maintained.
More detailed information about the project will be available once a contractor is on board. Additional information will be shared with the public as it is available. We anticipate that the project will be advertised in February 2022. A contractor will be selected in March, and construction will begin in the summer of 2022.
Hi, I'm Caroletta Daniels, and I am the designated point of contact during construction. We recognize that construction of any magnitude can create challenges for businesses and their patrons. My goal is to provide a consistent source of support and information for businesses through the construction phase of the project. I will work with the NC DOT project team and the city to get information, answer your questions, and share updates with the business community. I look forward to meeting all business owners individually in early 2022.
The project website will be updated as new information is available, and meetings with the public and businesses are planned for spring of 2022. Visit the project website for more information and updates on Dickinson improvements and to be added to our notification list.
And I will let you know, Mr. Hardy Raz did bring it to our attention, the conflicting information about bike safety during the video there and the mentioning of bike lanes. So that has been updated on our website, along with the video on our website. So here is some of the improvements made at particular intersections. This here is the Clark Street intersection. And as most of you know, when you drive down Clark Street, if you're trying to turn on Dickinson, it's not a very safe maneuver because of visibility. So we are realigning Clark Street to come to a 90-degree intersection. And there'll be some aesthetic features at this intersection. Something called a concrete plinth, which is basically a pedestal for art display. Here is Dickinson Avenue at Pitt Street. At this intersection, there will be what's called a parklet, a very small park, with a turf area, some landscape beds, and another one of those concrete pedestals for artwork. And as you see in this area, there's the decorative sidewalks in brick. Through the residential areas, we'll be updating the sidewalks and ramps at the intersections. One of the major things during this project is maintaining access to businesses and residences. This is, you know, an idea of what could possibly happen during construction. So, once we build a section, we could have the pedestrians on the actual roadway that we've completed while we're working on the sidewalk portions and have access to those businesses in a safe way. And this will be closed to vehicular traffic at that time.
It will be, you said will be closed?
Closed to vehicular traffic, yes. On March 2nd, we had a mandatory preview meeting. These were the contractors that were in attendance. So one of these contractors will be one of the contractors that will be the contractor for us. Several of these have very prestigious names in North Carolina and hold a lot of NC DOT contracts. All of these are pre-qualified to bid on this project. So we're letting this project tomorrow, March 15. And it's available for construction by the contract on April 25. But based on getting materials and everything, we're looking at a summer start date. Completion date for everything except for plantings is September 1 of 2024, with overall completion of February 28, 2025. Like it spoke about, we are doing this in sections. That way, we can maintain traffic on most of the corridor while we're working in these sections. The way the contract is written, we have to start on Section 7 from Fickland to Reed Circle. And they'll have 115 days to complete that work and open it back up to traffic. And then they may work on Section 6 after that time, and they have 100 days in Section 6. The remainder of it, they may work on those sections while they're working on 6 and 7. So, once we get a contractor and have our meetings with them to start the project, we'll know better of which sections they intend to start on first. But 7, they have to start first. You guys have any questions?
Councilmember Bell?
Has there been any discussion about removing that on-street parking? And either widening sidewalks or just creating, you know, bike lanes or, you know, really anything?
Yeah, it's from my understanding, because this project was previously put together and then put on hold, and now it's been brought back. So the teams have changed during that time. But from what I understand, from everybody looking into it and look at past meeting minutes and everything, there was some discussion about, between the city and the North Carolina Department of Transportation, about what was preferred. From what I understand, it was preferred to maintain those on-street parking spaces in the business district, which does not allow us to have bike lanes because of, we are not widening the footprint of Dickinson Avenue. We are maintaining the same footprint. We are just making improvements.
Where were those meeting minutes from? What year? Do you know?
I want to say 2013.
13?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had a significant amount of parking, off-street parking added to that area since then. Is there going to be an opportunity for input on that from the city?
At this time, the project is already, it's being let tomorrow.
Right.
We have the final design already in.
So what are we doing specifically to address bike traffic and pedestrian traffic?
There's some communication right now between the Department of Transportation and the city on options for that. We're looking at possible doing share roads, which is having the bicycle symbol on the roadway to let drivers know that bikes frequent the road and to watch out for them.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smiley?
I mean, I guess I understand the, I mean, I think the import of the questions is that there was an extraordinary amount of back and forth, you know, many years ago. about, you know, between the public and the city and the DOT, about what might or might not be a good, you know, design for the project. And then, you know, things changed. The DOT stopped doing things for a little while, and the project got backed up, and then it got pushed back, got accelerated again. Is it just common not to read, not to go back to interested stakeholders and reconfirm what their desires were or what the best design might be? It seems like that if you're doing a design based upon feedback from 2013 and you're doing the design in 2020, 21, that you'd be suspicious that that feedback might be dated.
Right. The city has been involved with the NC DOT all along the way. So, the city has also had their input in the design.
So what, Madam Manager, what, who's been responsible for that?
The city engineering, I'm sorry, the city engineering staff has been participating with DOT on this project. I do think, I'm going to look to Lisa and to Kevin. I think what Lisa would tell you, and Lisa and Kevin would tell you early on when the conversations came up, the property owners and the business owners along Dickinson Avenue expressed a great desire to retain the spawned street parking. Is that correct, Kevin? That was a conversation that was had, that they were very attentive to parking and parking issues downtown. I don't, I do not, I'm not aware of conversations relative to bike lanes.
It certainly goes, goes back a number of years. And initially, the city's desire, working with DOT, was to have wider sidewalks and to eliminate some of the on-street parking, to have bike lanes. There was a great deal of pushback from the business owners, the property owners, not to go in that direction. And so what we have is on-street parking, and, you know, your point is a good one, that there were, were not parking lots, or the number of parking lots that there are now. But as Sarah was saying, the roadway is just, is, I mean, the buildings are zero-lot line. The roadway is not being expanded. Getting bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes on a road this size would be very difficult in conjunction with the parking. So that was the initial thought.
And I think that, and I'm going to, let Lisa can join part of this conversation. I think that as the project stopped and then restarted, the city was engaged to talk about some of the amenities on the project, some of the Intella streetlights, some of the landscaping requirements. But in terms of the core design of the road, we were not, because the project was designed and essentially ready to bid out at the time that it was put on hold. And so if we were going to, if we were going to go back to NC DOT to say, scrap the design and restart it, that was going to totally adjust the schedule, and that would have really, we would not be in this place today. We would not, we would not be close to this place today.
And we'd be looking at additional design costs.
Additional design costs.
That's correct.
But it was originally designed with bike lanes, right? The original design?
I can tell you when it was re-initiated, and I don't know if Sarah knows, before then, but when it was re-initiated, there were no bike lanes on it.
There were no bike lanes? When, when, were there ever at any point bike lanes?
That I can't answer. Do you know, Kevin? Was it?
Till last week, they're on the, they're on the website.
Right, but on the actual plan. I do think that, I think Kevin has mentioned this, the physical constraint of the road is that it is a very, very, a very narrow section of road to retain on-street parking and two lanes of traffic. It would make bike lanes, the drawback would be bike lanes or parking, which can't have both.
Right. I guess, you know, as Councilmember Smiley kind of alluded to, is that if that was what was on the website, it's almost kind of like they were sold a bill of goods and just didn't come through. It just was changed all of a sudden, you know, and I think that's probably...
Right. I don't know if it was changed all of a sudden.
It's, from my understanding, because the team went back and looked at previous public hearing maps, and there were not on the public hearing maps, but there was notations of they may be considered or may be included in the design.
When were those public hearings? Were those the 2013 public hearings?
No, these were very early on. I don't know the exact date. Before we even had, you know, a full-on design.
The only other question I've got, and it's not necessarily, it's more or less for staff. You know, when I first got on the city council, we would have NC DOT routinely come by and, you know, present new projects that were taking place, any like modifications that might take place. We did that with Evan Street, Old Tar Road, Fire Tower Road, Portertown Road. We did that with Allen Road.
Fire Tower.
That's why I said Fire Tower. Fire Tower and Portertown, and then 14th Street. Is there a reason that, I guess, the NC DOT isn't like coming back and updating us or telling us what's going on with the projects?
I think it's a very simple reason, Mayor, and then I think it's the fact that NC DOT in the last three to four years has faced major budget constraints, and every single project that has been slated for construction or has been under design has been pushed back significantly. So while we would certainly love to talk to the council, and I'm sure NC DOT would love to talk to the council about those road projects, there has been very little work on those road projects, other than this Dickinson Avenue project, which will, which will let tomorrow.
So then I guess that's, my question is, it's going to let tomorrow. Like, when we had the first initial meetings about Evan Street, Old Tar Road, there was a big discussion about walls at South Hall and things like that, and it took long periods of time to be able to flush out issues with those, and they were finally taken care of. And if there's any other issues that would have came up, it would have been very helpful to know that if things were changed or modified, or if a presentation was done and say, hey, this is the project, several months before it's to let, there could have been questions asked or modifications made at that point, or some type of feedback made.
Right. And the core, and Lisa's taught me if I'm wrong, the core design of this road is the core design of the road, which is what was presented at the council back even prior to my, to my tenure with the city. The core design, the change, any modifications have been really related to operations, related to the Intella street system, which is a sophisticated, expensive system of street lines. We did that to save some money and some additional landscaping. But the core design is the core design. I hear what you're saying, and certainly if we're in a spot with Evan Street, with Fire Tower, Portertown, with Allen Road, we will certainly bring those back to the council so that we can provide updates to the council related to what the designs will be if there will change. But there have been no changes to this road. Ms. Lentine is indicating that those bike lanes, while there were, there was a comment that said, "may be considered," the bike lanes were not included on those plans.
Councilmember Smiley?
So, is it a fair summary of how we got here? That a set of designs was made based upon a set of criteria that was in place, let's call it 2013, in that general area? I'm not trying to pin anybody down. There followed an interregnum where no real work was done at all because of larger budget issues, not specific to Greenville or even this part of the DOT. Those got resolved, and the, the, this project was then reactivated based upon the, the designs at the time, and there was not an opportunity to redesign the project. Is that a fair summary of how we got to this day?
Yes.
I will add too, I think, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but Right-Away had already been purchased as well for this, when it got stopped. So, design was complete, but they had also already purchased Right-Away for the project.
I would only add that that's a, that's a series of circumstances it seems unlikely to repeat. I mean, I don't like them. I mean, I don't like that, that the way it happened, but it feels like that's not the normal course of business for the DOT or the operations of the way things generally flow through this process. So, I don't know of any way to solve this problem, but I don't think that, I don't think it's necessarily indicative of a larger process problem.
Yeah, and I'll definitely take note and bring this to the vision's attention regarding Fire Tower and Allen Road, and all those upcoming ones that were also put on the shelf.
I think it would be beneficial to get updates as we get closer to the projects and not right before, just so we know. And I think that at least getting some type of public's display so people understand what, what type of modifications might be made, or if any will be made in the projects, because I think that would be very helpful. And it'll probably solve a lot of problems that you might have that come up at the last minute. And I, and I get it, I mean, I understand that there's been a funding issue through the NC DOT, and you're seeing this statewide. But when it starts and stops, and then all of a sudden picks back up, and it's just like the project's here, it's kind of like it sprung right on us, and, you know, I know you've been working with staff, but the rest of us really don't know what's going on. And that's not necessarily your fault, so... Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Meyerhoff?
Few questions, but just, I guess, a comment before I ask my questions. I would just like to say that, moving forward to everybody, DOT, city staff, I mean, we could do a better job with our sidewalk connectivity and having bike lanes. I would like to do whatever we could to have bike lanes wherever we can have them. So, just want to throw that out there for future reference for anything that we're building. A few questions. I didn't hear any discussion about lighting. Is the Dickinson Avenue corridor going to just have standard lighting? Is there going to be some sort of unique lighting to the Dickinson Avenue corridor? I seem to recall something about that.
Yeah, so originally, it was the Intella streets lighting, but as your city manager stated, that was taken back to your standard lighting, based on the city's preferences.
So there will be some unique aspect of the light, or just standard streetlights?
They are, so it'll be our standard streetscape, pedestrian-level lighting and road-level lighting. So, it'll follow the streetscape master plan, and it'll be very similar to what you see for all the other corners.
Similar to where we see where?
In Uptown, throughout Uptown, part of the build, we're using the same.
So it's all going to be consistent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Fair enough. There's a part of Dickinson that goes under the railroad, right?
Yes.
Are we going to have any railroad issues there? I know I was just talking about railroad issues with the greenway, so what about that?
Well, in our contracts, we require the contractor to get the railroad licenses and everything. And also, there's a timeframe in the contract that they're required to do all the work required there in a certain period of time. So that way, they're not stopping and starting and having to get the railroad flaggers and everything situated.
So there will have to be the flaggers down there just for the repaving, the whole redo of that section of the road, flaggers have to be down there for the railroad?
Yes.
Even though it's under?
Even though it's under, yes. They own from the sky to the center of the earth.
Okay. All right. I'm all set.
Any other questions, comments?
All right, thanks for having me.
Thank you very much. Item number 19?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, item number 19 is the naming of the Wildwood Park mountain bike trail. I'll call Recreation and Parks Director Donna Octagon for that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council.
Good evening.
I am here to present a naming request for Wildwood Park mountain bike trails, which was also shared with the Recreation and Parks Commission last week. Staff are currently soliciting bids, construction bids for this project, and I'm going to plan, I'm going to share a very brief update. Parks Planner Mark Noddyham has worked the last four months with Nature Trails LLC to design six miles of mountain bike trails, with support from various community stakeholders, including a local mountain bike club. The project will include mountain bike trails, a pump track, a bicycle skills course, all to be located on the east side of Wildwood Park. Construction is scheduled to begin this summer, and it'll take about approximately 12 months. This project will have a major impact on mountain bike riders in eastern Carolina and provides new outdoor recreational opportunities for our community. Shown here is an overview of the mountain bike trail course. The majority of the trails will be located on the eastern acres of Wildwood Park. This area consists of various elevation changes throughout, and will provide a very unique experience for all riders of all skill levels. The area is also prone to flooding when the Tar River reaches major flood levels, which will require rock armory and boardwalks to be installed in various areas where flooding is expected. As mentioned, the trail is totaled six miles, which will allow cities, our staff, to host various competitions, which we are already working to schedule for the future. This will be, this will be the only bike facility of its kind with a mountain bike trail system, pump track, and bicycle skills course in coastal Carolina, and will certainly be a great amenity for our, our community and the citizens of Greenville. So tonight, we're here to ask council to approve the naming request before you. The design and construction of the mountain bike trails is made possible by a generous donation from Grady White Boats and the Eddie and Joe Allison Smith Family Foundation in honor of their late son, Chris Smith. Chris was an avid mountain bike rider and had a vision of mountain bike trails being located at Wildwood Park. Mr. Smith, who has been a great supporter of Wildwood Park, and his team have been involved in the planning process since day one. They are very excited about the project and are looking forward to the groundbreaking of the summer. So our recommendation is for council to approve the naming of the park amenity as the Chris Smith Mountain Bike Trails. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Octagon?
Second.
All right, motion's made by Councilmember Meyerhoff, or second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay.
Motion passed. Sixty.
Thank you very much, and thank you, very special thank you to Grady White Boats and the Eddie and Joe Allison Smith Family Foundation for the tremendous amount of resources that they poured into Wildwood Park. Without their support, the City of Greenville and the citizens of Greenville would not be lucky enough to be able to have such an amazing asset in our community. So, big thank you to the Smith family for all that they continue to do for the City of Greenville. Move on to item number 20.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 20 is a presentation on the draft ordinance for amending the rules and regulations related to bars and clubs. I'll call for Chief Planner Shante Gubi and Director of Planning and Development Services, Todd Barnett.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Manager, Mayor, and council members. So we're back to talk a bit more about the 500-foot rule. Shante will take you through the ordinance, and then I'll step in talking about our last meeting with the downtown stakeholders and their comments and recommendations to you.
All right. Good evening. I first go ahead and just set the stage, which is, is this is just a draft ordinance, so this isn't something that you're approving as ideas. We're asking you to give us some feedback, give us a motion to move forward, so that then we can take whatever text we end up with to Planning and Zoning Commission in April, and then come back to you in May, rather. So this is a follow-up discussion from our February 7th meeting. Just last week, we had an in-person meeting with the stakeholders, which was March 9th. This is just the 500-foot stakeholders group, so these are folks, either they may have shown up once or twice, they may have shown up every time, but this is just letting you know who they are and who they represent. The first thing I do want to say is that the ordinance that you received, there is a typo, and that is, the ordinance should say that they may charge a cover charge or a minimum fee. And then the second thing we had in the ordinance, we talk about third-party rentals, and I know that that has been something of a subject we've had over the years with third-party individuals using other establishments. And through conversations with our city attorney's office, that, that may be problematic, it may even be prohibitive to be able to not allow third-party rentals. We're going to continue to work through that. We want to bring you something, obviously, that's lawful and enforceable, but I wanted to just point that out, since that is the second bullet point on your ordinance. As far as the other parts of the definition are basically what makes, and I just want to say, we updated it to bar 2022, we brought it into the year. So some other parts is, it does have to be less than 3,500 square feet. That means mechanically conditioned, so not storage space, but the club or the bar itself would have to be less than 3,500 square feet. They may have lively recorded amplified music, they may have a floor show or dance area, they may serve food. Closing hours, must close by midnight, Sunday through Thursday, must close by 1:00 a.m., Friday and Saturday. So one of the other things that we talked about in... So, one of the other things that we talked about, and we did have Mr. Johnson, who came here earlier, to talk about the actual location of where this can be located. So, we have shown this district now, which would be, the northern boundary would be at Third Street, there's the cursor, at Third Street, and then moving south, the southern border would be 10th Street. Mr. Johnson was actually speaking of the boundary itself, not the boundary of the district, but the boundary building itself. And so, if that is something you would like to include, staff will be happy to do that for you. It would be very easy, because it's basically going to run 8th Street and then Cotan Street. A Bar 2022 will require a special use permit that will come from the Board of Adjustment. This will run on an annual or yearly basis, and so, once you get that special use permit, as long as you are following the rules, and as I say, you're a good listener, then it would be annually, this would come up. This could be a renewal, it could be a renewal with amended conditions, or revocation. The other thing, this is another tool that allows staff, is if you do have someone who's operating that is getting numerous citations or calls for service, whether it be public safety, noise, even litter and trash, staff can request for the Board of Adjustment to bring this back to them for rehearing. And then also, at the end of the year, if you have operated with no citations, no issues, then staff can recommend to Board of Adjustment that you be, that the special use permit be renewed. If amplified entertainment is provided after 11:00 p.m., then the establishment would have to employ uniformed security officers, and that would be in the ratio, again, of 1 to 100 would be, security personnel would be, would be for one person per 100. I do want to point out that this means for the occupancy of the building, so not the occupancy of each night they're in operation, but it's based purely on the occupancy of the building. Some other ones would be, a security plan would have to be approved by Greenville PD. So, this has nothing to do with whether you have amplified entertainment at all, this is a security plan. Also, you would need to have a lighting plan, and this is just to make sure that the outside of the building has adequate lighting. No parking requirements, so you don't have to find parking for your patrons. There's on-street parking, there's even a parking deck that's available. Use apps and software to detect fake IDs. Also, you do have to bring the building up to modern code and safety standards. And then another big important point is, under this draft you have, there is no separation between uses or districts. So, if you are located within this boundary, the 500-foot rule does not apply. And that would be for similar uses, single-family homes, et cetera. And with that, I am finished, and I'll let Mr. Barnett take that.
So, last week, we had another stakeholders' meeting to kind of go over what the presentation was going to be to you all tonight. We shared that, the draft, the new map, and went through that with them, and the following were their comments. And at this meeting, we had, 1, 2, 3, 4, we had six non-city staff stakeholders attended the March 9th meeting. I'm just going to read their names. Carlos White, Don Edwards, Tony Curry, Bill Koch, Michael Glenn, and Brett Oliverio were the folks attending. And so, they were talking about enforcement, they wanted it to be strong. They wanted any reporting of an incident to be recorded and to be gathered, so that if it began to be a problem, this would be brought forth as evidence to BOA at a hearing, should that happen. They wanted to see expedience response times to any kind of reporting of an incident. They wanted the communication within city departments to be good, because they felt sometimes like the internal departments weren't communicating as well as they might. And then they wanted city staff to talk to the potential violators. When there was a violation, they wanted staff to be able to contact that owner, that operator, and let them know that there was an issue. They were talking about that strong enforcement was key to having this work. They talked about the deterrence of penny drafts, that allowing a cover charge will allow establishments to have cheaper drink prices that can lead to overconsumption and potentially other problems. There was the comment that, without some of the restrictions that we had in earlier versions, that strong enforcement on the back end would be key to making this thing work, since we didn't have as many prohibitions, such as a cover charge, that we needed to make sure we had strong enforcement. Allowing more establishment could increase noise, potentially. The, there was a comment that the pre-existing bars would not be affected by these new rules, that they would not solve the current or potentially current problems in Uptown with some of the bars that we've had in the past. The point was also made, though, that those bars, that the existing bars that are operating on an SUP have an annual review of their SUP as well. That occurs now. And then they talked about the boundaries again, perhaps it might be a good idea to extend those boundaries either to First or all the way to the river. And again, these are just comments and suggestions from that group. And then finally, so, summing it up, key suggestions, enforcement needs to be strong, the annual SUP review needs to be efficient and detailed and ultimately effective, the security plan should be reviewed by Greenville PD, and there should be an annual review of the process with the stakeholder group. How's it going? Are there issues? They'd like to be kept informed. And they also asked that we think about establishing a point person that works for the city that could be a point of contact for them. And that's essentially their comments to us to present back to you. So, we are then looking for-
Let me sample on those. Go back down here a little. No, that's it. We got it.
This is what happens when you have two line people trying to look at a-
Yeah, there it is.
There we go.
So, we are looking for a motion or direction from council to staff to bring forward a text amendment for Bar 2022 to planning and zoning. We could do this at the April 19th meeting, and then be back to you in May for your consideration.
Any comments or questions for the council?
Go ahead.
I just think, were there any specific requests to narrow the footprint? I mean, some of these, if I was looking uptown, you know, and the collection of storefronts right there on Reed Street at the boundary seemed like something that would be grouped into something like this, was there any particular requests for anybody that they not be part of that?
No, not to our knowledge. Nobody had any, we didn't really discuss that particular request, but no one was talking about the boundaries being too large and that we shouldn't extend them at the stakeholders' meeting. So, I, my guess is they'd be fine with that inclusion.
Councilmember Meyerhoff?
That's what I was going to say. I mean, we have a gentleman here that, if you'd like to come up, didn't you just talk about, you wanted to read the building there, Reed Circle, to be included, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I don't see any reason why we would say no to that. I mean, we can easily edit that, right, to include that storefront right there, and you're talking about being located in that storefront?
Yes.
Right?
We would need to make it so that it actually picked up the entire property, it's hard to just do the storefront.
Sure, okay.
So, it would be on-
So, that was your concern, 8th Street?
Yes.
8th Street, 8th Street over to Cotan.
So, then we can include that?
Right.
And that would pick you up.
No issue, there's been no objections, that includes you where you'd like to be set up, right?
Yes.
Okay. That works for me, if it works for everybody else, who included that? That addresses your concern there?
And we could, in the future, we could certainly alter the boundary. It presumably would be easy to expand it, might be difficult to restrict it, but, because I just think that we probably, there are, as you go down Reed toward the river, there probably are a few more, there's some clearly commercial areas right there along the way that one might imagine at some point, somebody might want those added. I'm not arguing for that now.
Sounded like it.
I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench into an existing process, I guess, I'm just saying, in the future, there is flexibility.
Any other comments? Councilmember Meyerhoff?
From a historical perspective, I believe I recall hearing that, were we the only municipality that had some, had these restrictions in North Carolina?
There's a couple of others that have them, but they had them for, I think, a little bit different reasons, and do they still, do you recall?
There are two places I can think of right now that probably have some pretty stringent requirements, that mainly had to do with some safety issues, and so, they have some pretty, pretty tight standards on, you know, the operation. I will say Greenville does have, we go a little further in-depth than a lot of places do as far as segregating and talking about a use as a bar and a club, and restaurants, and all the other different little, little uses that we have.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else have any comments? No other comments? Okay. Councilmember Bell, thank you all for your time on this, it's been an arduous process. First, could you go to that stakeholder list? I just want to see, it went really quickly, I just want to kind of get a feel for who was giving us feedback. All right, thank you. The 3,500 square feet, why, was there a rhyme or a reason to that?
3,500 was, was sort of that, we settled on that as a size, the point behind it was that we didn't want a very large venue that could hold maybe 500, 800 patrons, because just of the problem that we have with everybody coming out onto the street at 2:00 a.m. or whatever time it happens to be. So, we sort of looked around at a couple of existing bars and some restaurants, and came up with 35 as a reasonable number, not too big, but, but large enough to be, you know, and looking at what kind of plans came through and inspections, and what people were building and operating out of 3,500 feet seemed to be a reasonable size, can easily be changed, if you would like to see something different.
Okay. There was a slide about security, could you go to that slide? And I may have misread it, the way, the way I read it was that they would have to have security from, I guess, an external company, did I read that correctly?
That, that security is part of if they have amplified sound. If they don't have amplified sound, then the security plan would just be based on Greenville PD, how are people going to get in and out of the building, the number of people that would be able to occupy?
There was a different slide.
This one?
Yeah, where it says, shall employ uniformed security guards provided by security guard and control profession licensed.
There's a general statutes citation that's in there, I cut that out, but general statutes actually states what it would be to be a, a security guard, so that's what that is referencing.
So, we're not saying they'd have to have like an Event1 staff or something like that in place? That's like a company, I'm just, I'm making sure we're not going to-
Here's the chief. I mean, it would, it would essentially be professional security guards, I'm not sure if that's answering your question.
Yeah, I guess it is. So, we're saying there would be security that is not employed by the establishment, they would, they would be for hire from an external business, correct? Third party, yes.
There's the chief, and he's going to fail us.
Can you answer all the questions we posed in the last part?
Not often does the chief get marred.
The thought here is that they would be licensed through the North Carolina Security Association, there's some sort of a license there that you can get for security guards. So, this model is more of a hire a third-party security. However, I think you can also have your own staff go through that same course, become licensed and recognized through that. And the whole idea is that they're visible, they're professional, they're clearly identified, and they're all followed by some standard rules. So, whether they're hired on as third-party, or, I don't think this would, would prevent, I think we could, we could perhaps recognize the same thing, that they're, that they're recognized really as security guards, and I would have to, I apologize, I can't pull that up right now for you, but we could certainly share some information with you, what we're thinking about there, which is licensed and recognized through the state of North Carolina as security, not necessarily just a quick bouncer class, you know, with the police department or something.
Right, yeah, if, as long as it's a way that their staff could be, you know, trained or, you know, whatever would need to, need to happen, instead of having to bring in a third-party, I've, I've heard issues with third-party companies before, as far as, you know, like right now with labor shortages, actually being able to get, you know, the staff to come and be a part of, of the business, so I'm just, you know, just, just curious about that.
Yeah, just keeping within the ratios are the important things, and then the professionalism with some training.
Yeah, okay, I understand. All right, thank you. And then my last question, who from staff would be responsible for requesting the BOA hearing? I know, I know that we said staff could, but who specifically in our staff would be responsible?
It would, it would essentially, I think, what we're going to create the process as, it would essentially come from the department director, so at this point, that would be me, but it would always be the department director or their, and obviously, they're going to be working, just as I would, working with staff, we convene a group to look at the thing, and then ultimately, if we think it needs to be reheard, I would make the formal request, or the director would make the formal request.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Litchfield?
So, you know, some of the, some of the criteria that you looked at here are common sense criteria, right?
But, it's not going to be enforced on existing businesses, is that right?
It is not. This is geared specifically to any new establishment, a Bar 2022 that would come in under the relaxation or the elimination of the 500-foot separation rule. There are existing rules that apply to those that hold an SUP now, and how they get reviewed, and those, those have been ongoing, I guess, forever? Yeah, for years, anyway.
Right.
So, we'd sort of had two criteria.
An old set of rules and a new set of rules.
Yeah, unfortunately, and that makes it a bit difficult, but-
But there are some common sense rules here. Can you define amplified sound for me?
It's in the ordinance.
You may not, what the, you're, you're asking what amplified, I mean, amplified through speakers.
Okay, so is that like a stereo playing in a bar?
Yes.
It could be.
Could be. If you have, if you have any music going out through an amplifier, so it's not acoustic.
So, there's a martini bar down off Dickinson, and they have to have a security guard there because they have music playing through speakers?
After 11.
After 11.
After 11. But yet, we have other bars and establishments who, you know, have hundreds of people in there.
Are you talking about the existing ones?
Correct, yeah, I'm just saying it's pretty illogical, what we're doing, and not including some of the others with, you know, some of these common senses approach. And I know they're completely separate things, I'm just making a point. So the amplified sound seems a little, can, or the amplified sound definition maybe could be loosened a little bit? Just a thought. And I know this isn't a final determination here.
At this point, Councilmember Litchfield, what the city staff would intend to do is to take the, these regulations to the P&amp;Z Planning and Zoning Commission. We would make the change to expand the boundary. If the council would like to explore other changes, we're happy to be able to pass those on to P&amp;Z as well.
Yeah, just, just making a point.
Any other comments, questions? Anyone like to add that as something to look into and pass along to P&amp;Z? Coming from the attorney?
And I don't know if this is to your point, but I will say that, that is the, that's the same rules we have for DNEs. We do not have it for bars, but this is a, this is the same rules that apply to dining and entertainment establishments.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Direction for the staff? We can give them some direction?
If, to summarize, I'd suggest we ask staff to return with a, to develop an ordinance and round it appropriately, incorporating what we've talked about here and the expanded...
To include the boundary, which is Eighth Street to Cotein.
That parcel, yeah.
Right?
Eighth to Cotein.
Right, that block.
And that would be the only change from what we presented tonight?
I would like some clarification, if it's okay, you know, on, you know, the security guard and, you know, a process by which they can go through to get their, their own staff for the establishment accredited, or whatever, you know, terminology, terminology we would like to use.
Okay. Good work on that.
Just a clear standard, right?
Yeah, clear standard. And if there is not a path for their staff to go through an accreditation or training, that is something I would probably like to see changed, because it's, you know, a, a big ask to ask, you know, every single business that's going to open to go hire a third-party to come in and, you know, operate the security at their business. But I do agree that we absolutely should have, you know, security standards in place, no doubt.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion? Yes? Second. Ms. Clerk, do we have a...
Okay, so the direction I have is Byron Meyerhofer made a motion to accept, what's that? Incorporate everything. Ask staff to develop an ordinance round appropriately, include extending the boundaries, and to provide some clarity on security guards as well, terminology on getting staff accredited. That's what I have.
Good.
A second, ma'am.
Excellent. All right, some motions been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, move on to item number 21.
Thank, thank you, Tom Chantet.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 21 is a budget ordinance amendment aid to the 2122 City Greenville Budget to the Engineering Capital Projects Fund and to the Capital Projects Fund. And Byron Hayes has that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Budget Amendment 8. Budget Amendment 8 includes adjustments to the general fund, stormwater fund, and the engineering capital projects fund. Breakdown of the amendments. We are recognizing funding received for youth athletic sponsorships within the Rec. Parks Department. That's an increase in the general fund of $2,500. Realocating funds from the Recreation and Parks Department to the Planning and Development Department for increased workers' compensation claims. It's a net neutral impact to the general fund of $10,000. Recognizing funds received for the annual United Way campaign, an increase in the general fund of just under $3,000. We are appropriating fund balance within the Stormwater Utility Fund for Pitt Street Drainage Repairs, an increase in the Stormwater Fund of $165,000. And recognizing current year funding in the Engineering Capital Projects Fund for the pavement management program, which is an increase to that fund of $2.8 million. And as a result, the City Greenville Operating Fund increases to $151.6 million, and staff recommends approval of the operating fund ordinance and the engineering capital project fund ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hayes?
Want to approve?
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to review of the March 17, 2022 City Council Agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The first, the council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
First board that we have is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee, Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Affordable Housing Loan Committee?
Yep. And I can get with you about those appointments if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay, I'll get with you. Next is the Human Relations Council, also Mayor Pro Tem Glover. Okay. Next is the Police Community Relations Committee. We've got one seat for Councilmember Smiley.
Continue that.
Okay. And one seat for Councilmember Daniels. And finally, we have Youth Council, Mayor Pro Tem Glover. And that concludes our appointments.
Great, thank you. Additionally, the council will consider a resolution approving an exchange of property with Ward Holdings LLC. The council will also hold a variety of public hearings that will include, item number three is an ordinance to annex Barrington Fields, Section 2, involving 4.0301 acres located at the current termini of Barrington Drive and Abbey Drive. Item number four is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to annex Philstone, Section 2, involving 8.4128 acres located at the current termini of Sweet Bay Drive and Cedrus Drive. Item number five is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to annex Nexus Harris Mill Apartments involving 93.87 acres located along the Western Ridesway, the Bees Barbecue Road, and 360 feet north of McGregor Downs Road. Item number six is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to annex White Hall, Phase 1, Lot 32, involving .66 acres located at 4405 Spring Pines Road. The council will also consider a public hearing, will hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance requested by Ashton Alexander Properties LLC at all, to rezone 27.689 acres located along the Eastern Ridesway of Allen Road and adjacent to Cobblestone Townhomes from RA 20 to R 6. Item number eight is a public hearing to consider an ordinance requested by Happy Trail Farms LLC, to rezone a total of 25.168 acres located along the Western Ridesway of NC 43 South between Blue Bell Drive and Covy Lane, and adjacent to Gray Fox Run for, for Track 1, which involves 7.640 acres from OR to Commercial, and Track 2, which is 17.528 acres from R 6A to R 6. Item number nine is a public hearing to consider an ordinance requested by Commercial and Office Centers LLC to amend the future land use and character map for 25 acres from office institution and mixed-use high-density to residential high-density for the property located along the Southern Ridesway and Statensburg Road, roughly between Statensburg Road and Allen Road. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider an ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of the dwelling located at 1305 West 4th Street, which is known as Tax Parcel 21925. Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider a resolution and lease agreement for lease of parking spaces at the 4th Street Parking Garage related to the hotel development agreement between the city and Greenville Ventures NC LLC. And finally, item number 12 on that agenda will be an update on the gateway signage. That's the meeting for March 17th, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Move on to the City Managers' Report.
I have no report this evening.
All right. I think Councilmember Meyerhofer said that was the best news of the night. All right, we'll move on to comments by the mayor of the city council. Councilmember Bell?
I would like to wish my wife and mother and my child a happy birthday for tomorrow. She's celebrating another year in her twenties, and we'll just leave it at that and let her disclose the age.
Yeah, so far.
There you go. That's right.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
All set, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Litchfield?
No comment.
Councilmember Daniels?
Tomorrow is World Social Worker Day, and I would like to wish all the social workers that I work beside each and every day, a Happy Social Worker Day. Thank you, Mayor, for our proclamation, and thanks again to all the social workers for all that you do.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
All right. I want to say congratulations to our ECU Pirates baseball team. Got two of three this last weekend. We're improving as the season goes on. We've got a young team. I think we're going to continue to get better as the season goes on. So make sure you get out to Clark Leclerc Stadium and support our Pirates. Hopefully, we'll have a good end of the season, too. Also, I, I do want to say, I'm, I feel a little bit bad. I feel like I kind of went after our city staff today about the NCDOT project, so, Madam Manager, it wasn't meant that. I think a little bit my frustration is the fact that a lot of our projects are going very, very slow with the NCDOT, and I'm hopeful that they will continue to move forward a little bit faster, because I can tell you that years continue to keep going by and these projects just do not get done. And, you know, I think that part of the frustration is, is that things continue to change in our country, in our world, and, you know, as we continue to see the changes with electric vehicles and things, these are things that we've talked about, that as people make those switches over there, until they make a decision on how they're going to fund these projects, if they're not getting fuel tax at the pumps, there's got to be a way for them to do that. And with less and less revenue coming in, these projects are going to get pushed back further and further and further, and then we're going to have to come up with ways to be able to keep our roads and our infrastructure in good working order. So I'm hopeful that we'll continue to have a good partnership with the NCDOT. I'm hoping that they will fund our roads and get them fixed, because it's extremely important, because we can do all that we want to do here at the city and continue to grow and bring businesses here and continue to focus on economic development, but if we don't have a good base to continue to grow, it doesn't do us any good. If we come in here and you've got businesses that we're recruiting, our, our roads are in shambles, and our city looks a mess, and just a disaster, it's going to be tough for us to be able to continue to grow. Fire Tower Road's a great example of that. Fire Tower Road, I think, maybe about a year ago, was at 126% capacity? I mean, that's crazy, 126% capacity, and that road, I don't think it's going to be done for another three to four years, roughly?
Maybe longer.
Maybe longer. So, you know, that's, it's just going to get worse, so we've got to continue to work with our partners with the NCDOT to get these projects done and get done in a speedy fashion. So, I'm off my soapbox. Now I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay?
Motion passes 6-0.
We are adjourned.